Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March 7, 2023 Planning Commission Work Session. Ms. Adouma?
Good afternoon. Our first case that we have would be CA-2201 with Ms. Julie Chop.
Can you switch it on for the work session?
We're doing Z-2301?
Yep.
All right. First case, Z-2301, Deep Creek Boulevard. Julie Chop.
All right. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I'm Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the Portsmouth Planning Department. This rezoning application is a request to rezone an approximately .81 acre lot at 5125 Deep Creek Boulevard from general mixed-use GMU to multifamily urban residential URM. The site is located along the southern limits of Portsmouth, on the east side of Deep Creek Boulevard, adjacent to a portion of the Norfolk Southern Railroad and the city of Chesapeake. The parcel contains a one-story, 1,200-square-foot, single-family structure constructed in 1946. The site also contains three accessory structures of various sizes. The property is surrounded to the north and northwest by single-family dwellings that are zoned URM. East of the site is a wooded wetlands area, also zoned URM. South of the subject property is the Norfolk Southern Railway within the city of Chesapeake. The residential property to the west across Deep Creek Boulevard is zoned neighborhood mixed-use NMU. The proposed rezoning for 5125 Deep Creek Boulevard from GMU to URM will provide for residential development. The existing accessory structures are proposed to be demolished while the single-family structure will remain. The applicant plans to submit a minor subdivision application to subdivide the property into three lots. Two of the newly created lots will be developed with two single-family detached dwellings or one single-family detached dwelling on each. The existing single-family dwelling will be renovated and encompass the third lot. The applicant submitted a preliminary plat as part of this rezoning application in order to illustrate the intent to subdivide the property into three lots. Should this rezoning application be approved, the applicant will need to submit an official minor subdivision application for review and approval in order to officially create three individual properties. The lot configuration shown in the preliminary plat in your staff report packet may change based on applicable standards in the subdivision ordinance. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for Commercial Use. This designation was applied because of the existing GMU zoning, but the corridor is predominantly residential. In April of 1972, City Council approved a rezoning of this parcel from a residential zoning district to a commercial zoning district. The rezoning was requested in order to operate a feed-and-seed store, which appears to never have come to fruition. The proposed URM designation is actually more appropriate than its current GMU zoning. Rezoning the property will bring the existing single-family use into conformance with the zoning ordinance. In addition, the proposed URM zoning district is consistent with the majority of the surrounding properties. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request for 5125 Deep Creek Boulevard. The proposed rezoning to URM is consistent with the surrounding properties and would provide for the development of the site in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding areas. To my knowledge, no comments from the public have been received regarding this application, and this concludes my presentation. And I will now stand by for any questions from the Commissioners.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Chop?
Actually, I just have one comment to staff. Again, thank you for a great presentation and laying this out. The one thing I see in this application or this staff report that I really like is the comments from the city where they all reviewed it and other departments have reviewed and provided comments. I think that sends an appropriate message, not only to us, but also to the people who are viewing and watching that other departments have looked this over and noted such impacts, if there are any, for development. So I just wanted to give you some kudos for that. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Julie.
Next case, UP-2301, West Haven Neighborhood.
All right. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I am Amy Mervine, Senior Planner with the city of Portsmouth. This use -- oh, hold on. There you go. This use permit application request before you today is for the development of seven townhouses on the approximately 0.374 combined acres at 3614 Race Street and 1211 Rodman Avenue. The properties are located in the multifamily urban residential URM zoning district. The applicant's proposal is to subdivide the properties into seven parcels and develop seven townhouse dwellings. A commercial building was located at 1211 Rodman Avenue prior to 2020 when the structure was demolished. A five-unit apartment building was located at 3614 Race Street prior to its demolition between 2005 and 2006. These properties have been vacant of structures since their demolition. The properties are currently vacant of structures with areas of gravel. A sidewalk is located along Race Street and Rodman Avenue and a driveway apron at 1211 Rodman Avenue. The surrounding area consists of residential uses, commercial office space, and vacant property. To the north of the subject properties are detached single-family dwellings zoned multifamily urban residential URM. To the west is Rodman Avenue, followed by vacant property located within the fenced area of West Haven Elementary School zoned URM. To the east is vacant property, followed by a commercial-type building zoned general mixed-use GMU. To the south is a medical office building zoned URM and a commercial office space building zoned GMU. The applicant's proposal is to construct seven townhouses on the properties at 3614 Race Street and 1211 Rodman Avenue. Each proposed townhouse unit will be two stories with the required two off-street parking spaces, one of which will be located in a one-car garage. The approximate size of the units will be 1,540 square feet of living space with three bedrooms and two bathrooms per unit. The conceptual plans also include a covered front porch, a concrete patio at the rear of the property, and a six-foot fence located at the rear of each unit for a fenced-in backyard. The proposed building materials will be standard stick-frame structure on a concrete slab foundation with a brick skirt. The siding will be a combination of vinyl siding and hardy plankboard. Per the recommended conditions, no proposed abutting townhouse shall be constructed exactly the same. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for a Mixed-Use Corridor. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's use permit request with the recommended conditions. With the conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Comprehensive Plan, is appropriate in this location, and is compatible with the surrounding area. To my knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding this application. I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions?
Hi. Good afternoon. I just had one question regarding when the neighbors take out their trash, if they're not on the end unit, will they have a way to go from the backyard to take their cans to the front?
Yeah. So I know engineering had made a comment as well proposing basically an access easement so that they can take them out of the fence backyard and put them basically along -- let me pull up the aerial -- along Rodman Avenue so that that way, you know, they can't -- that's why it looks like the fence also isn't along the property line so that they would have access to basically bring it to the edge of the road for pickup.
And who would maintain that area? The grass between the fence and that? Would that just be part of the property owner to go right out their gate?
Yeah. That'll be part of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And if I might add, Commissioners, these units are all proposed to have garages, front-loading garages. So it's likely that they will store the trashcans in the garage.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I do have a question. Under the digital video equipment, are you requiring that during construction? Or will that be something that's required of all of the property owners, the surveillance?
Yeah. So an example would be like installing the Ring doorbell cameras. At this time, I don't think we're proposing it to be on -- like, you know, with the multifamily on each side, just as kind of still as the crime prevention to have some sort of Ring doorbell or security camera installed. But otherwise, not during construction as once it's been built.
Okay. Because it says digital video equipment, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. I think that's just going to be our standard language at this time. I think we're still working on that.
Thank you. Commissioner, what do you have?
They can't hear you. Here.
This is to Assistant Director Penninger. Will you make your statement about the trashcans will probably be stored inside the garage? That sent up an antenna for me, knowing that that could be the worst thing that could occur. Now, is that the way a lot of the -- because I've never lived in a townhouse. Is that the way the townhouses in Portsmouth normally with the garages? That's where they store the trashcans?
In general, yes. They would either store it in the garage or, as Amy indicated, in the backyard and take it out through that rear, you know, access area. I believe she placed a condition on the use permit of that they cannot store them in the front yard where they're visible.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because years ago, when I lived in an apartment complex, the individual, I think it was two, three, four, four units, and they were storing the trash can inside what I guess you would call it the trash can receptacle room. And that really created an awful problem because it attracts, as you can imagine, rodents. Whereas when you have your can outside, storing it outside, like if it's an open carport-type area, that works better health-wise because obviously, if the can is outside, there would not be that preponderance of the possibility of attracting rodents inside your homes. So that's why I was very curious about that.
And again, that would be up to the individual property owner at that point. The zoning ordinance, you know, doesn't regulate that. Some people probably will choose to have it in, you know, in the backyard. But that, you know, the zoning ordinance does not regulate where--
Where they place their can.
Right. Other than, again, we would like to restrict that they not be visible from the front of the property.
From the front. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Mervine.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to CA-2201. Julie Chop.
Good afternoon again. I am Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the Portsmouth Planning Department. This presentation will give deep -- will provide details on the proposed amendments to the Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance. At the November 1 Planning Commission Public Hearing, Planning Commission adopted a resolution initiating staff to prepare amendments to the city's zoning ordinance for consideration by the Planning Commission and City Council. At the January 17 Planning Commission Public Hearing, CA-2201 was deferred for 60 days to today's public hearing. Planning Commission requested that staff hold a meeting to further explain the proposed code amendments. An informational public meeting was held on February 22 to provide explanations and answer questions on the proposed text amendments. A recording of the meeting, as well as the presentation, are available on the Planning Commission Agenda page, the zoning ordinance page of the city's website, and on this slide. As with any zoning ordinance, it is anticipated that many amendments will be necessary to adjust for changes to the Code of Virginia, streamline development regulations, improve clarity and ease of use, and address matters that arise as it is implemented and as the needs of the community change. Staff is aware that we are asking Planning Commission, City Council, and the public to digest a considerable amount of information with the proposed amendments. In the future, we do plan to present zoning ordinance changes in smaller chunks. However, the majority of these proposed text amendments are routine minor adjustments that are proposed to make sections of the zoning ordinance more clear and easier to use. It is standard practice to amend the city's zoning ordinance text as part of ongoing maintenance. I would like to note that the amendment regarding storage or parking of heavy trucks, trailers, or major recreational equipment has been removed from this set of amendments. In light of comments voiced at the February 22 meeting, staff would like to do additional research on this topic to ensure any proposed changes address all of the issues. Based on the feedback from the informational meeting, the staff report was rewritten to break down and explain the amendments in a clear and concise manner. The amendments have been split into seven sections according to the sections of the zoning ordinance to make it easier to understand. Several modifications to the standards for the downtown D1 sub-districts are proposed. Density is the number of residential dwelling units permitted per acre of land. The maximum permitted density for D1, T4, T5, and T6 is proposed to be increased. This change is intended to further the city's goal of providing additional housing. The city's 2020 Citywide Strategic Housing Plan calls for an increase in new and modern housing options. This change was prompted by several situations where the maximum permitted density did not allow for the desired number of units and did not reflect an appropriate density for the area. The minimum required density is proposed to remain the same to provide for those that do not want to develop at a higher density. Open space set aside is the portion of a proposed multifamily, three-to-four-family, or mixed-use development that is required to be open space. The required open space set aside is proposed to be reduced for the D1, T3, and T4 sub-districts to align with the requirements for the rest of the city. The open space set aside standards for T5 and T6 are proposed to be eliminated. These changes are intended to allow for more intense development in the downtown area. Another change proposed for the D1 districts is to add standards for accessory structures. An accessory structure is a structure that is detached from and subordinate to the principal structure in use and square footage, such as a shed or a garage. The ordinance does not currently contain accessory structure standards for the D1, so this is a needed change. These standards are in line with accessory structure standards for similar districts and also maintain the character of the downtown area. The current ordinance does not include dimensional standards for fences and walls in the D1 districts. An amendment is proposed to require that fences in the D1 district comply with the dimensional standards for fences and walls within commercial districts in addition to the design standards for properties that are in the downtown design overlay district. Fences in commercial districts must be four feet and 50% transparent in the front yard and eight feet in the side and rear lots. This proposed change allows applicants who are converting an existing structure in the D1 the flexibility of not having to comply with the minimum or maximum density requirement. This change encourages redevelopment and the reuse of existing buildings. Site landscaping is required landscaping planted around the building perimeter. Developments in the D1 are often built to the property line so there is not adequate space for landscaping around the foundation. This amendment proposes to exempt those developments in the D1, T4, T5, and T6 from complying with site landscaping requirements if the building facade is less than five feet from the property line. It is proposed to allow the maximum total sign area, or how big a sign can be, in the D1 to be based on the length of the street frontage of the lot or the area of the front building facade, whichever is greater. This change was prompted by situations where an applicant wanted to install a larger sign than was permitted and that was still appropriate for the lot and the downtown area. This change allows additional options for business owners to measure signs in the D1. The proposed standard is consistent with the standard for the sign area in historic districts and is appropriate with the downtown character. It is often necessary to add uses to the zoning ordinance. The current code allows ground-floor dwellings by right in the districts shown on this slide. This change would require an applicant to request a special exception for approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, or BZA, in order to convert a previously established commercial space to a ground-floor dwelling in the D1, T3, T4, T5, T6, HLB, and HLO districts. The proposed changes related to a family day home use bring the city's zoning ordinance in line with state code requirements and clarifies the process. A family day home is the licensed care of five to 12 children in a residential home. When someone applies for a family day home zoning permit, the zoning administrator mails a notice to the neighboring property owners. If an adjoining property owner replies with a written objection of the use, the zoning administrator will deny the zoning permit. This change to the zoning ordinance allows the applicant who was denied to then apply for a use permit to request that City Council review and decide on allowing the family day home use at their discretion. Many uses are subject to use-specific standards or standards specific to a particular use that ensure the use is suitable with the surrounding area. To account for the increase in requests to develop two-family dwellings or duplexes, use-specific standards are proposed to ensure the development of two-family use is appropriate. Commissioner Hines brought up a question about the driveway standard. This standard should state that a two-family dwelling may be served by no more than two driveways on the same block face. So it's number, Roman numeral two is the one that's incorrect. Yes. Okay. The city is particularly concerned with the safety of its residents. This proposed change requires that all multifamily dwellings within the city install security cameras encompassing the front, sides, and rear exteriors of the establishment for 24 hours per day. This standard is typically included as a condition for all use permits. This change would require that multifamily developments that are permitted without a use permit in the D1, T4, T5, and T6 also include security cameras. At the February 22 meeting, a citizen requested to also require cameras in multifamily parking and common areas. Staff would like to do additional research prior to including this change. The city is also seeing an increase in requests for shipping container/chassis storage yards within the city. This type of development is not appropriate on smaller lots, so a two-acre minimum lot size is proposed for the shipping container/chassis storage yard use. The maximum density for the neighborhood mixed-use NMU and general mixed-use GMU zoning districts are proposed to be increased to allow applicants to build more units if they choose. This provides additional flexibility and options for developers and an increase in housing options within the city. The newly established innovation overlay district includes the uptown area of the city. A corresponding increase to the maximum dwelling units per acre is also proposed for this area as an incentive to develop here. The only proposed setback change is to provide for additional flexibility for the development if smaller lots, for smaller lots that are zoned GMU. This is a change that existed in the previous Chapter 40.1 zoning ordinance but was inadvertently left out of the update. The change would provide for a 10-foot sideyard setback if the parcel is less than 100 feet in width. The minimum end unit lot width for townhouses and NMU is proposed to be reduced from 35 feet to 25 feet, which will provide for additional options for townhouses within the NMU. The zoning ordinance requires that an accessory structure be shorter than the principal structure. This proposed change allows an applicant to submit a special exception application to the Board of Zoning Appeals to review and approve to request that the accessory structure be taller than the principal structure. Minor modifications to the off-street parking requirements are also proposed. Changes are proposed to the bicycle standards for multifamily dwellings. In practice, staff found that the bike space requirements were too burdensome for multifamily developers. This proposed change provides some relief while maintaining adequate bicycle spaces for multifamily residents and visitors. The zoning ordinance currently allows applicants to submit an alternative parking plan for review by the zoning administrator that proposes an alternative number of off-street parking spaces that then is required by the zoning ordinance. This proposed change allows an applicant to submit an alternative parking plan to request an alternative number of bicycle spaces than what is required. This change is in light of feedback from recent multifamily developers and also attempts to provide additional flexibility to future applicants. This section deals with changes to the landscaping, exterior lighting, and signage sections of the zoning ordinance. Landscape buffers are areas of vegetation required by the zoning ordinance to separate uses in different use classifications. A change is proposed to modify where required buffers are located to be based on the existing conforming use on abutting land rather than the neighboring zoning district. This change will assist with protecting uses from new developments that may be more intense. A change is proposed that provides a maximum illumination level at the property line for industrial uses that abut residential, commercial, public, institutional, or mixed uses. Currently, there are no maximum illumination levels for industrial uses. This change ensures surrounding uses are protected from any negative effects. Another proposed lighting change requires a 30-foot maximum height for outdoor lighting in industrial districts and provides a procedure for an applicant to request an increase in the lighting height for review and decision by the zoning administrator. the lighting height for review and decision by the zoning administrator. This change is proposed to accommodate industrial operations that may have unique lighting A ground sign is a permanent freestanding sign that is taller than it is wide and there is no air underneath it. This proposed change would allow ground signs within the neighborhood residential NR and general residential GR zoning districts in order to increase the signage options within the city. The open space set aside section is proposed to be modified to clarify that structures designated for active or passive recreational uses are permitted within the required open space area. This slide shows a change to the types of developments that are not required to set aside green space. It is proposed to exclude existing buildings that are being converted to a new use from having additional open space. The last section includes minor housekeeping changes, including text revisions to comply with the Code of Virginia, removing duplicate standards, clarifying existing standards, and correcting typos and Scribner's errors. The CA-2201 amendments are intended to improve the zoning ordinance provisions in order to advance neighborhood quality goals and economic development of the city. Many of the proposed text amendments are routine minor adjustments that make the zoning ordinance more user-friendly, or ensure that the ordinance standards are consistent with the Code of Virginia. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments in order to provide necessary modifications to specific zoning standards and facilitate harmonious development and redevelopment within the city while still maintaining the health, safety, and welfare of the public. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Julie. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, if you don't mind, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding what you said about the heavy equipment and the recreational. So those are being taken off these code amendments in their entirety? Am I understanding that?
Correct.
So that's the heavy equipment, that's the jet skis, that's the trailers, all that's gone. So we're not going to be touching that this time around?
Correct. The proposed changes were removed.
Okay. Second question, actually more of a comment, you did a great job at the presentation on the 22nd. I think that offered a lot of clarity, and I'd like to thank staff for taking the time to do that. For those that were able to attend of our group, I think, you know, we got a good insight from where our constituents wanted to go with that. There was one question that kind of came up in that, and I'm sorry I didn't put it in my previous list of questions, but it kind of just hit me. There was something about the people that are already in the application process at various stages, once we change these amendments, if they're impacted, my understanding is they have to reapply again under the new zoning pieces here. Is there any way that we could grandfather those people that are currently in process so we don't have to start their process all over again? Is that even a possibility for that?
So I'm going to tackle that one for you. So the way that that would work is if a standard is proposed to be more onerous in the future, like if what we're proposing is more difficult, if you've already submitted your application, you're good to go. We will review you under the old code. If the new code is going to be more permissive than what the old code required, then we basically would request that that applicant sort of reapply so that we can apply the new rules to them. So in general, if it's going to make it easier for them, we want to allow it to make them, if they're not like three quarters of the way through the process, you know, if they've just recently submitted, then we would want, you know, the new rules to help them out. So in either case, we would want to err on the side of benefiting that particular applicant.
Right. I think that's where I'm asking for that question is, is if they're already 80% done, 90% done, they're just right there.
Yeah.
I'd hate to start that clock all over again for that applicant. You know, there may be some resources that that applicant may have already had to expend to get to this point. I'd hate for something that we're doing here to impact their ability to, you know, get, you know, their project to a point that they can get approved. And then I guess the last question, you said several times about the Board of Zoning Appeals, have they reviewed this and offered any comments, suggestions, anything of that nature?
They were invited to the February 22 informational meeting. So they were given an opportunity.
Same opportunity. I just didn't know if the staff, you know, they coordinated with staff in between those meetings or anything of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a case where someone is requesting to put containers on a 1.4-acre parcel. In code amendments, we recommend a minimum of two-acre parcel. Because that person has submitted the application before the code may change, he would go in, we would not require the two-acre parcel requirement because he's in before the code possibly changes.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions?
Donna?
Hi. I should have asked it or stopped you while you had it. Back at the slide, it was on the set for number one, A, the minimum density requirements. Could you just explain that one? I think it's back to one more.
This one?
That one, yes, thank you.
So if, I guess you could use, like, an existing building in the D1, right now there's a minimum and a maximum required, or density, like you have to be within that minimum and maximum, but because that's, it's an existing building, they're not expanding it, then they would be able to have whatever density that they, you know, they don't have to comply with those requirements. So, you know, they don't, like, they could have one unit if they wanted, and right now, you know, you couldn't, you know, develop, I'm not describing this very well. Go ahead, Ms.
So in the downtown area is the only place where we have minimum densities, right? We have minimums and maximums. The idea is that you want, you don't want somebody to just build two units in, you know, in an area. But if you have an existing building, there might be challenges within that building to, that would prevent you from either hitting the minimum and the maximum. In the previous code change, we actually, last year, or year before last, I guess, we took out the maximums, saying that they could, you know, if they're redoing an existing building, that they could do that without complying with the maximums. But it has come up a couple of times, or at least once, I believe, that somebody was having difficulty hitting the minimum because of, you know, the way the building is configured. And we don't want to, we don't want to make them, like, tear the building down and have to build a new building. We want to preserve buildings in the downtown. So this allows them, if they're, you know, working on an existing building, already built, that they will not have to comply with the minimum and the maximum. And outside of the downtown, we don't have minimums, but in the downtown area, there are minimums and maximums. So that, this change would allow, again, just for existing structures, if you're going to convert it, say, from an office building to now apartments, that you would be able to do that without being limited or, you know, in either direction by, you know, by the amount of density that you could do, and configure it how it makes sense. Sometimes you get in these buildings and there's walls or columns or whatever that make it restrictive about how you're able to do that. So that, this would allow more flexibility, again, to preserve those existing buildings in the downtown area.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Commissioners, any additional?
I guess I just have a general question about densities overall. And I know what you're saying, that we need, you know, we have a housing needs in the city and things of that nature, and I am pro contractor probably 99% of the time. However, the, some of these densities, you know, doubling and essentially tripling even in some overlay districts, I think, you know, we have a number of citizens that have brought the density question to me, and concern to me, because we do have some infrastructure challenges in our city. That maybe, and it looks like this would be, you know, a by right deal, y'all can approve this through without public hearing and all those types of things. I'm not sure, I think a bump up would be probably important to do, but I'm just not sure if the, and this is more of a comment, this aggressive of a bump up, given some of those challenges. So I do have some concerns, and I've had a number of people reach out to me with those concerns. So I don't know how the body feels about that as a whole, but if I didn't, you know, present that as concern, I wouldn't be doing my job and representing them, so, thank you very much.
Sure. So with the, in terms of the downtown increase, we did take a look at some of the existing multifamily developments in the downtown and found that they were significantly above what our existing maximum would allow. So that, you know, was part of an indicator that, you know, told us that we needed to increase that. There's also been a number of situations where people would, you know, wanted to do a higher density, but it was above what the maximum was permitted. And in one case, the applicant had to combine several parcels in order to reach the density that was desired, and that was appropriate within the area. So in terms of the NMU and the GMU increases, the starting point at where that maximum density, we found was very low, and especially when you look at the, the GMU has a 60-foot maximum height, so if you're only at a 16 dwelling units per acre maximum density, then, you know, if the applicant decided to build up, they wouldn't really have very much room to go up and still have units. And then within the innovation overlay district, that is an area that the city is working to revitalize and increase the development, as well as the, you know, modern and quality housing within that area. So that is why they were in the, the Chapter 40.2 code, there was an incentive given in a higher density rate for the NMU and GMU, so in order to encourage that. And we could use the previous, the application that I believe you guys heard last month or the month before on 1100 High Street, they, in order to, they weren't able to reach the desired density that they were wanting, so they utilized the resilient site and building bonuses feature within the zoning ordinance, which is great, but this change will allow them, or would have, you know, allowed them not to do that. And, you know, we do, you know, that, the housing study that I mentioned does encourage, does state that there is a need, like, for additional housing, so we, this is an attempt to, you know, provide additional options as well as increase the housing stock within the city.
Again, I do thank you for that. I just think, you know, I just want to make sure that we're looking at all the issues that could play into development, especially with aging infrastructures and things of that nature, when you put more density into a situation that may not be the best in the world. And I know the city council's done a lot of movement the last few years on trying to shore that up, and I get that, and I'm sure there'll be more use coming that way. But, you know, speaking of just, you know, water and wastewater utility, all those types of things, with greater density could become greater issues there, and I just hope that you did, you know, look at that, from that standpoint.
Yes.
And then I guess the next question, follow-up on that would be, I'm assuming this number probably came from past uses where we've had to kind of go up and above and beyond for a variety of reasons to make things economically feasible. I'm assuming that this is that number that you probably have worked on.
Yes, yes. And to the, to your point about the utility infrastructure, when a development is proposed at a certain density as part of the site plan review process, the public utilities department will review the development, and if the existing infrastructure is not at, you know, at a sufficient level to meet the needs of the development, then the developer would be required to upgrade that infrastructure, to build new infrastructure. So that would be on the developer to handle that.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Good, okay. Thank you, Julie. Commissioners, I would like to ask you during our planning commission meeting, we will need a motion to move the code amendments, that's CA-22-01, to the end of the agenda today. And then second, we would like to add an additional five minutes to the amount of time that a, that someone can speak, from five to 10 minutes. Pardon? On that item, on this item, CA-22-01.
Do you want us to move that in the regular meeting, or?
Yes, please, at the beginning.
If I maybe add one more little caveat to that is, I think if a speaker is in the middle of their thought at 10 minutes even, I think we should allow the chair to have that discretion to allow that person to finish her comment, if that's agreeable to the body.
It is, it's, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Adamo, is there anything else?
Just took the words out of the mouth, I was going to make those suggestions. Last year, I'm told that the staff, we didn't do any code amendments, so we're catching up, so bear with us.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask, and maybe this is not an appropriate time to ask, but I think as a commissioner who takes the charge from council fairly seriously, we were charged by council on 23-01, that's not on the agenda, whether we need to have a, maybe an item added next month for an update on that. But it seemed like there was quite some maneuvering and changing at the council level. And I just want to make sure that we met our requirement from council, because, you know, we did have a charge to bring back a code amendment about their ability to change their mind on things. And I just want to make sure that we have met our requirement as their commission. So if that's something staff can talk to right now, or they need a report back to us, that would be fine, but I just want to make sure we have met our charge, because it seems like there was quite a bit of discussion at the council level that may have deviated from the original discussion, or what we passed to them.
Ms. Peddinger?
Yes, so as those of you who are either at or watched the city council meeting, they did have a quite amount of discussion about CA-23-01, and there will be some, when you see that in its final format, the city council meeting, there'll be some changes from what you all took a look at, but there isn't any further action at this point that the planning commission needs to take. You all made your appropriate votes and motions, and city council took that into advisement. And again, there'll be, there'll be a proposed code amendment at the next city council meeting for that.
Okay, thank you. And just to tidy this up, the second one, everybody is in agreement to allow the public speakers to, okay, all right, thank you. If there's nothing else, then we will all join back together here at 1:30 for the regular planning commission meeting. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, March 7, 2023, being held in the city council chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the planning commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Curry.
Present.
Commissioner Jiggett.
Here.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Page. Commissioner Page, Commissioner Hines.
Present.
Five members of the planning commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the February 7th, 2023 public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, move, move for adoption of the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the February the 7th, 2023 public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetz.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hines.
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, April the 4th, 2023, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to city council for action at their April the 11th, 2023 public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time, if you have not already done so.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, staff has made a request to amend the agenda to move CA-22-01 to the end of the agenda and to allow the public five extra minutes of speaking time.
I'll second.
Thank you.
With, with an amendment of allowing the chair to allow even additional time for a member of our audience to finish your comment as well.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Our first item, Z-23-01, Deep.
You don't need to. Do we?
Go ahead.
Commissioners, we need a vote, please.
Okay.
He, he, he already made the motion.
He made the, he made the motion. Jiggetz made the second.
No, he made the second, I made the motion.
Okay.
We got it straight? Mm-hmm. Okay.
We're good.
We have a motion and a second to make the change on the agenda. As our commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetz.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hines.
Yes.
The item is approved by a vote of five to zero. Our first item on the agenda, Z-23-01, Deep Creek Boulevard. David Perry Realtor LLC, on behalf of Doll House Investments LLC, requests to rezone approximately 0.81 acre property at 5125, 5129, Deep Creek Boulevard, from general mixed-use GMU to multifamily urban residential URM. In order to subdivide the property and develop three single-family dwellings, the future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as commercial. The property is owned by Doll House Investments LLC and is further described as tax map 453, parcel eight. The staff coordinator is Julie Chopp. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is David Perry. My business address is 249 Central Park Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23462. I represent the applicant, Doll House Investments LLC. Before you is our application, and I'd like to thank city staff for taking great care and diligence with this application. My presence today is mere, a mere supplement to their hard work and efforts. The applicant requests to rezone approximately 35,000 square feet of property from GMU to URM. The purpose of this is to accommodate the positive rezoning of a property to provide diverse, quality, safe housing in a corridor that lacks capacity to accommodate that request. This parcel is located at 5125 Deep Creek Boulevard, just north of the Chesapeake Portsmouth city lines, I'm sorry. From that line, which is approximately Claremont Drive, north to Burt Lane, all the properties there are zoned residential. They all have residential purposes. This property is the only property that is currently zoned commercial. So this approval of this application today will bring this property in line and in conformity with the existing parcels within the corridor. Also, the, with addition, this approval will accommodate and remove barriers to development that will allow the acquisition and, and development of three properties. And it is our, my client's respectful request and prayer that the, this body sees fit with staff approval to accommodate this request. I yield the remainder of my time to answer any questions or concerns by this body and city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hines?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you have any idea what they're going to go to market for these townhouses for, price-wise?
Well, they'll be single-family dwellings. The outsell price is unknown right now, but it will be diverse, quality, safe housing in this corridor.
Commissioner Curry?
Is this the same developer that is doing the, who did the other houses by Burt Lane?
No.
Would they be similar houses, the single-family houses?
They could be, yes.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you so much for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-23-01. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman and members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. We have a motion.
You're moving for adoption? Second, that would be, yes, we'll make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hines. Madam Secretary.
Thank, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-23-01. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Jiggetz.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hines.
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, UP-23-01, West Haven. Gregory Milestead PE requests a use permit for the development of seven townhouses on approximately 0.374 combined acres located at 3614 Ray Street and 1211 Rodman Avenue in the multifamily urban residential URM zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The properties are owned by Keith Alexander and are further described as tax map 314, parcel 55, and 56. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman, ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission. For the record, my name is Billy Garrington with Governmental Permitting Consultants in Virginia Beach, here today to represent the two applicants in this matter, Mr. Keith and Mr. Kevin Alexander. Of this zoning request that's in front of you today for the conditional use permit, UP 2301. The request that's in front of you today is to subdivide this piece of property in order to create the seven townhouse slots that you heard your staff talk about in the informal session. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you how helpful your staff was in working with us on this. I mean, every time we've ever called them and asked them to do anything, they have been Johnny on the spot. They were very helpful. And we'd like to make sure that we let you know how nice, how helpful they were in coming up with this plan that you have in front of you today. So the request is for the seven townhouse units, we have given you the, the conceptual drawings showing what the front elevations are going to look like. In the staff report, there are eight comments affiliated with this request. We are in total agreement with all eight of those requests. And Mrs. Jiggetz, we heard what you had to say about the trash cans in the informal session, and that's even a condition in there that we will make sure that that is abided by. So we are here today to ask for your approval of this use permit so that we can get the city council and, and begin construction as soon as possible. And we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. But I wanted to make sure we thanked your staff for how much they have worked with us in coming up with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Garrington. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-01. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we're in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, a move that we approve, UP-2301, with the conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hines.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve, to approve UP-23-01. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetz.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hines.
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero with conditions. Our next item deferred from the January the 17th, 2023 planning commission meeting, CA-22-01, citywide. The city of Portsmouth proposes to amend city code chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance to modify specific sections for clarity and function, and to correct minor scaringers errors throughout the zoning ordinance. The staff coordinator is Julie Chopp, and Julie Chopp will present this application at this time.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Vice Chairwoman, planning commissioners. I am Julie Chopp, Principal Planner with the Portsmouth Planning Department. This presentation will provide details on the proposed amendments to the chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance. At the November 1st planning commission public hearing, the planning commission adopted a resolution initiating staff to prepare amendments to the city zoning ordinance for consideration by the planning commission and city council. At the January 17th planning commission public hearing, CA-22-01 was deferred for 60 days to today's public hearing. Planning commission requested that staff hold a meeting to further explain the proposed code amendments. An informational public meeting was held on February 22nd to provide explanations and answer questions on the proposed text amendments. A recording of the meeting, as well as the presentation, are available on the planning commission agenda page, the zoning ordinance webpage of the city's website, and on this As with any zoning ordinance, it is anticipated that many amendments will be necessary to adjust for changes to the code of Virginia, to streamline development regulations, to improve clarity and ease of use, and address matters that arise as it is implemented and as the needs of the community change. Staff is aware that we are asking the planning commission, city council, and the public to digest a considerable amount of proposed amendments. In the future, we do plan to present zoning ordinance changes in, in smaller segments. However, the majority of these proposed text amendments are routine, minor adjustments that are proposed to make sections of the zoning ordinance more clear and easier to use. It is standard practice to amend the city zoning ordinance text as part of ongoing maintenance. I would like to note that the amendment regarding storage or parking of heavy trucks, trailers, or major recreational equipment has been removed from this set of amendments. In light of comments voiced at the February 22nd meeting, staff would like to do additional research on this topic to ensure any proposed changes address all of the issues. Based on feedback from the informational meeting, the staff report was rewritten to break down and explain the amendments in a clear and concise manner. The amendments have been split into seven sections according to sections of the zoning ordinance to make them easier to understand. Several modifications to the standards for the downtown D1 standards are proposed. Density is the number of residential dwelling units permitted per acre of land. This change is intended to further, the maximum density, the maximum permitted density for D1 T4, T5, and T6 is proposed to be increased. This change is intended to further the city's goals of providing additional modern and quality housing. The city's 2020 citywide strategic housing plan calls for an increase in housing options. This change was prompted by several situations where the maximum permitted density did not allow the desired number of units and did not reflect an appropriate density for the area. The minimum required density is proposed to remain the same to provide for those that do not want to develop at a higher density. Open space set aside is the portion of a proposed multifamily, three-to-four family, or mixed-use development required to be open space. The required open space set aside is proposed to be reduced for the T3 and T4 subdistricts to align with the requirements for the rest of the city. The open space set aside standards for T5 and T6 are proposed to be eliminated. These changes are intended to allow for more intense development within the downtown Another change proposed for the D1 districts is to add standards for accessory structures. An accessory structure is a structure that is detached from and subordinate to the principal structure in use and square footage, such as a shed or a garage. The ordinance does not currently contain standards for accessory structures in the D1 subdistricts, so this is a needed change. These standards are in line with accessory structure standards for similar districts and also maintain the character of the downtown area. The current ordinance does not include dimensional standards for fences and walls in the D1. An amendment is proposed to require that fences in the D1 comply with the dimensional standards for fences within commercial districts, in addition to complying with the design standards for properties that are within the downtown design overlay district. Fences in commercial districts must be four feet and 50% transparent in the front yard and eight feet in the side and rear yards. This proposed change allows applicants who are converting an existing structure in the D1 district the flexibility of not having to comply with a minimum or maximum density requirement. This change encourages redevelopment and the reuse of existing buildings. Site landscaping is required landscaping that is planted around a building perimeter. Developments in the D1 are often built to the property line, so there is not adequate space for landscaping around the foundation. This amendment proposes to exempt those developments in the T4, T5, and T6 from complying with site landscaping requirements if the building facade is less than five feet from complying with site landscaping requirements if the building facade is less than five feet from the property line. It is proposed to allow the maximum total sign area, or how big a sign can be in the D1, to be based on the length of the street fundage of the lot or the area of the front building facade, whichever is greater. This change was prompted by situations where an applicant wanted to install a larger sign than was allowed but was still appropriate for the lot and the downtown area. This change allows additional options for business owners to measure signs in the D1, and this proposed standard is consistent with the standards for signs within the historic districts and is appropriate with the downtown character. The next section deals with uses within the zoning ordinance. It is often necessary to add uses to a city's zoning ordinance. The current code allows ground-floor dwellings by right in the districts that are shown on this slide. This change would require an applicant to request a special exception for approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the BZA, in order to convert a previously established commercial space to a ground-floor dwelling in the D1, T3, T4, T5, T6, HLB, and HLO districts. The proposed changes related to a family day home use bring the city zoning ordinance in line with state code requirements and clarify the process for establishing a family day home. A family day home is the licensed care of five to 12 children in a residential home. When someone applies for a family day home zoning permit, the zoning administrator mails a notice to the neighboring properties. If an adjoining property owner replies with a written objection of the proposed use, the zoning administrator will deny the zoning permit. This change to the zoning ordinance allows the applicant who is denied to then apply for a use permit to request that city council review and decide on allowing the family day home use at their discretion. Many uses are subject to use-specific standards or standards specific to a particular use that are, that ensure the use is suitable with the surrounding area. To account for the increase in requests to develop two-family dwellings or duplexes, use-specific standards are proposed to ensure the development of two-family uses is appropriate. Commissioner Hines brought up a question about the driveway standard. This standard should state that a two-family dwelling may be served by no more than two driveways on the same block face. The city is particularly concerned with the safety of its residents. This proposed change requires that all multifamily dwellings within the city install security cameras that encompass the front, side, and rear exteriors of the establishment for 24 hours per day. This standard is typically included as a condition for all use permits. This change would require that multifamily developments that are permitted without a use permit in the T4, T5, and T6, that they include security cameras. At the February 22nd meeting, a citizen requested to also require cameras in multifamily parking and common areas. However, staff would like to do additional research prior to including this change. The city is also seeing an increase in requests for shipping containers/ storage yards. This type of development is not appropriate on smaller lots, so a two-acre minimum lot size is proposed for this use. The maximum density for the neighborhood mixed-use NMU and general mixed-use GMU are proposed to be increased to allow applicants to build more units if they choose. This provides additional flexibility and options for developers and increases the housing options within the city. The newly established innovation overlay district includes the uptown area of the city. A corresponding increase to the maximum dwelling units per acre is also proposed for this area as an incentive to develop here. The only proposed setback change is to provide for additional flexibility for the development of smaller lots that are zoned GMU. This is a change that existed in the previous Chapter 40.1 zoning ordinance but was inadvertently left out of the update. This change would provide for a 10-foot side yard setback if the parcel is less than 100 feet in width. The minimum end unit lot width for townhouses that are zoned NMU is proposed to be reduced from 35 to 25 feet, which will provide for additional townhouse options within the NMU district. The zoning ordinance requires that an accessory structure be shorter than the principal structure. This proposed change allows an applicant to submit a special exception application to the Board of Zoning Appeals to request that the accessory structure be taller than the principal structure. Minor modifications to the off-street parking requirements are also proposed. Changes are proposed to the bicycle standards for multifamily dwellings. In practice, staff found that the bike space requirements were too burdensome for multifamily developers. These proposed changes provide some relief while maintaining adequate bicycle spaces for multifamily residents and visitors. The zoning ordinance currently allows an applicant to submit an alternative parking plan for review and decision by the zoning administrator that proposes an alternative number of the required off-street parking spaces. This proposed change allows an applicant to submit an alternative parking plan to request an alternative number of bicycle spaces than what is required. This change is in light of feedback from recent multifamily developers and an attempt to provide additional flexibility to future applicants. This next section deals with changes to the landscaping, exterior lighting, and signage sections of the zoning ordinance. Landscape buffers are areas of vegetation required by the zoning ordinance to separate uses and different use classifications. A change is proposed to modify where required buffers are located to be based on the existing conforming use on the abutting land rather than the neighboring zoning district. This change will assist with protecting uses from new developments that may be more intense. A change is proposed that provides a maximum illumination level at the property line for industrial uses that abut residential, commercial, institutional, and public, or mixed uses. Currently, there are no maximum illumination levels for industrial uses. This change ensures surrounding uses are protected from any negative effects. Another proposed lighting change requires a 30-foot maximum height for outdoor lighting in industrial districts and provides a procedure to request an increase in the lighting height for review and decision by the zoning administrator. This change is proposed to accommodate industrial operations that may have unique lighting needs. A ground sign is a permanent freestanding sign that is taller than it is wide, and there is no air beneath it. This proposed change would allow ground signs within the neighborhood residential NR and the general residential GR zoning districts in order to increase the signage options permitted within the city. The open space set aside section is proposed to be modified to clarify that structures designated for active or passive recreational use are permitted within the required open space set aside area. This slide shows a change to the types of development that are not required to set aside green space. It is proposed to exclude existing buildings that are being converted to a new use from having additional open space. The last section includes minor housekeeping changes, including tax revisions to comply with the code of Virginia, remove duplicate standards, clarify existing standards, and correct typos and scrivners errors. The CA-22-01 amendments are intended to improve zoning ordinance provisions in order to advance neighborhood quality goals and economic development within the city. Many of the proposed text amendments are routine minor adjustments that make the zoning ordinance more user-friendly or ensure that the ordinance standards are consistent with the code of Virginia. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments in order to provide necessary modifications to specific zoning standards as well as to facilitate harmonious redevelopment and development within the city. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to second verse, same as the first here, back to density. I just, I'm having a hard time with the understanding of some of the large jumps. And I understand innovation district and trying to move people to develop. But I guess my concern is not only the infrastructure like we talked about, but there's, I throw the pebble into the water and the ripple effect keeps going and going and going and going. So, for example, we have a handful of developers come in and take advantage of this higher ability for density. At what impact, and who's going to look at the impacts of that density of a number of these developments taking place? For example, we have four or five apartments that come in and they develop to that maximum density. Who's looking at it from a development side of, are we going to need a new school? Are we going to need a new firehouse? Are we going to need, especially in this compacted kind of area, especially in the neighborhood, you know, the overlay? That's a smaller kind of area that honestly, I think is probably, if we looked at it a little bit critically, has been underserved anyway in our city. Are we taking one problem and making it much bigger in terms of that area of density? I might be able to digest some of the other ones here, I think, but I think I'm having a real problem with this innovation area. And I think the second question is, and please staff correct me if I'm wrong, but I also believe this is going to be kind of in a beautification area as well, about another grant that we're receiving, I think a $17 million grant, that's going to take portions of this overlay district from four lanes of highway to two. Will that create, again, having this level of density or the ability of this level of density, by then reducing the amount of traffic potential in that area, is that going to cause a problem? As it currently sits, there's probably not an issue from traffic, but when you go from four lanes to two lanes, is that going to cause a problem there too? So that's, I guess, my concern here that, you know, A, really the biggest thing is the impact of this density. I know the schools, you know, some of these schools in this area are fairly old and in some cases, starting to get a little crowded in certain areas. Are we causing a problem where we get X number of dollars in tax revenue and creating a $50 million construction problem for the city? So that's my concern, and I know that you've worked very hard. And I do want to publicly say, you guys have done an amazing job in answering probably hundreds of questions on this. And I know at least 30 for me over this period of time. So I do want to just say that, but I'd like to hear kind of who's going to watch that, the impacts of density. And then there's the other question of equity too, that runs into this. So fifth developer that comes into this thing may not have that same ability, where we may have the capacity for the first four developments, but what happens when we hit the fifth one? And we say, you know something, we're really stretching the schools or the fire or the EMS or whatever to a point that we're going to need something to make that happen. What happens with that fifth or sixth or seventh development in this overlay district? So.
So I think, thank you very much for the comments, Commissioner Hines. So I would like to point out that within the NMU and GMU where the in-question proposed density changes are proposed, a multifamily development does require use permit. So each development will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis by staff. These applications are routed to various pertinent city departments. Our interim director actually has just expanded the departments that will now receive these applications to include the schools as well as, you know, the police department and fire department. So, you know, they will be given the opportunity to take a look at these. And I, don't quote me on this, but I do believe at the current, our current state that the schools are not near their capacities. So I think that that's why it hasn't been an issue in the past. But I agree that we want to make sure that we're not creating additional burdens elsewhere within the city by allowing this increased development. And in terms of the traffic, like right now, we do have provisions within our zoning ordinance regarding, you know, traffic counts that would trigger a TIA. We also have a standard that allows the city engineer to require any development to obtain and do a traffic study. So I believe once those changes to the high street corridor are made, that the city engineer would take that into consideration when evaluating these, each of these proposals. And I think in terms of equity, I believe there's a number of studies that show that increasing density is actually also increasing equity. If you're, you know, you're allowing more people to access different, you know, the transportation networks within the area by increasing the density, you're, you know, less cars are going to be on the road as there're more, you know, more people use the public transport if there's more people within a given area. So I, you know, I'm not sure if the 2020 strategic housing study has been shared with you guys, but if not, I would highly recommend that you all take a look at it because I think that it, overall, we, the city is, you know, is in need of additional quality housing. A lot of the housing stock within the city is old and outdated, and we want to encourage developers to develop, but also being mindful of, you know, the city constraints.
Allow me just to give clarity to my equity question, not necessarily for the housing state. And I agree, I think we do need to have higher-quality housing options throughout our city. I agree with that. However, it was more of an equitable issue to developers was my question. So once we get to a point where we say, you know, yeah, these higher densities are great, and we've done, moved to this point, and now we're like, you know, okay, we're open for business. And I'm all for being open for business, but you get too open for business, you get four or five developments into this, then what happens on the sixth developer? We say, whoa, wait a second, this thing is going out of control. The other five flew through on a higher density with no problem, no issues, no anything. But the sixth one, we're stopping them, dead in their tracks. Saying, wait a second, here we are, we have unintended consequences of, you know, going from 12, 16 to 64. It just seems like it's a big, big leap. I mean, I think that's where my hesitancy here is. I think maybe, you know, a measured step to see what is our impact of would be, in my opinion, you know, more favorable. But again, maybe I'm just being, you know, a conservative in that matter. But, you know, that's my concern, is, you know, we get four, five, six of them down the road, we realize that we have some unintended consequences. But from equity, from a housing standpoint, from a transportation standpoint, I would love for people to have, you know, better quality housing in the city. I've supported just about every one of these housing projects since I've been on here. I've supported just about every one of these housing projects since I've been on here, my time in EDA, not sure if y'all researched that or not, but I've supported every single housing initiative that's come to me. So, I'm not anti that, but I'm just anti jumping into it so aggressively. So, thank you again for, for all your insight and for your information. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional, Commissioner Jigetz?
Yes, this is to Planning Director, Interim Planning Director. I think I heard Ms. Chop indicate that you are expanding the departments that you will be, yeah, that you will be soliciting input and comments from when it comes to developments. And I think that is, that is, should be a mandatory requirement. In other cities, it is mandatory that certain pertinent departments must sign off on developments, particularly if it's going to impact student enrollment, quality of life, and that, I think I heard, I heard mention of the police department and the school.
Yes.
Staff, so that, I was waiting to hear something like that, because I was going to pose that question, because it is, in my opinion, mandatory that those departments sign off. And I hope you also include in that the Port of Redevelopment Housing Authority, because as you know, they are actively involved in developing affordable housing.
They're included.
And all of that becomes the solid quilt that will impact the quality of life for our children. So, I'm going to assume that you also solicit mandatorily comments from the Redevelopment Housing Authority? Would that be correct?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Heinz?
I'm going to come off of density now. So, there was a spot where you're talking about addressing smaller lots and setbacks. So, the question that I have is, so if you've got a smaller lot and then you have, you know, a certain amount of setback, are we doing enough to address, you know, potential projects on those? Are those setbacks aggressive enough to allow for those smaller projects on those smaller lots? Or is that just a good number to maybe start at and then see how that impacts those developments? I think it's a great move, I just don't know if that one is quite aggressive enough, because again, a small lot means a much smaller project, which means they got to fit more into a smaller footprint, I guess. Is that enough to spur that development on that smaller lot, I guess is the question that I have.
So, that, as I mentioned, that 10 feet, if the parcel is less than 100 feet in width, is a carryover from the previous code. But I do believe that it, it allows enough, I mean, we want to ensure that there's adequate space for any required landscaping, and for those unusual lots that, you know, 10 may be, you know, where there may be some form of hardship, the applicant does have the option of applying for a variance to request a deviation from, from the required setbacks. So, there is some mechanisms for them to, to find an appropriate number.
And I think my last question for now is, the, I asked about the Board of Zoning Appeals, I imagine the Downtown Design Committee and Downtown Business Associations were all invited to the February 22nd opportunity for them to give us feedback and things about nature. And to your knowledge, have they given any sort of feedback to us in any way?
They, the Downtown Design Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, all of the boards and commissions were invited. The DDC and the HPC, they handle the design and materials of a, of a development, so they, they might not have as many comments on the zoning side of things, but they were given the same opportunity to provide comment.
And the Business Association, all of them were given notifications of that?
Yes, I sent the flyer to all of the city, the civic leagues within the city, as well as an extensive list of developers that, that we researched and obtained.
It was a wide reach, and I thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chop.
Madam Chairman, if you could just indulge me one second?
Sure.
I'd just like to add a little bit into the discussion about density for Mr. Heinz, and Julia did a fantastic job addressing you. In the Innovation District in particular, you know, that project's success is going to hinge upon getting people living there in order to be able to, you know, serve and, you know, go to the businesses that we're hoping to get there, to have that be a very successful mixed-use type corridor. So, having additional residents there is going to be essential to that project's success, so I just wanted to add that little piece. I certainly appreciate your, your concerns there, but, but again, that, that, that's kind of where that piece fell in, is that in order to make that be successful, because as you indicated, it has been a very underserved area over, you know, over the history of quite a while. Getting people living there is going to be essential, not just having businesses to that. So, I just wanted to, I'm sure that you sort of already knew that, but I just wanted to put that out there on the record for that.
Madam Chair, I do have one more question. I know Ms. Chop just sat down, but it's one that I thought may have come up from one of my other commissioners. The video piece that we talked about, where it says multifamily, at one point, I believe the intent was that we would be looking at that from a apartment complex kind of style of living. Is that also going to be equally applied to duplexes, for example? I just want to, because that's considered multifamily, right? Just making sure, is that something maybe we should add some clarifying language into there?
So, as, as you're aware, you know, duplexes, townhouses, most multifamilies are going to require a use permit, and as, as you are aware, we're already, you guys are already including that as a condition, a recommended condition on those use permits in the downtown area where duplexes are not permitted anyway. You know, again, this sort of addresses that, where those things are permitted by right, but would not trigger a use permit, and so they wouldn't have been required to have those cameras, whereas everybody else getting a use permit is already required to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about higher densities and that, I think that's, then, you know, just your ones and twos and that type of thing of that nature.
Yes, multifamily would be, would be that, would, the duplexes would not fall into that.
Thank you.
Ms. Pedinger, I'm sorry, would you repeat that again, that duplexes would not fall in?
They would, they, because, so the use-specific standards that you all are also have in the set of code amendments, you know, do not include them complying with the multifamily standards. Multifamily would apply to townhouses, and three-to-four family and multifamily. But again, if it requires a use permit, which in some districts it does, then again, that's going to come forward as a use permit condition. But if in the districts where it's permitted by right, then that would not fall to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA-22-01. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, may come forward. You have as long as you want.
That's refreshing.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mark Hugel, 2705 Island Road. I'm not going to take as long as I want, but I have three points or questions. First, I want to double down on the questions that Commissioner Heinz is asking about density. So, I'm also an encourager of bringing development and housing to the city, but my concern around density, similar to his, it's not clear to me that we have standards for, at what point we tell a developer no, because if the developer brings a new development to some part of the city, and our calculation for how many students that adds into the high school, the elementary school, or the middle school tops the capacity of the school, at what point do we tell them no? Seems to me, and you can extend that to the infrastructure, you can extend it to, you know, what point do we have to buy another ambulance? At what point do we have to build another fire station or police station? At what point do we have to widen the roads to accommodate the additional traffic? It's unclear to me what the process is. It's unclear to me the standards that we use to determine that, but it seems to me that, that this is ripe for planning department analysis. So, we know what the Innovation District boundaries are. We know the free territory inside the Innovation District. If we built out the Innovation District to the density that we're getting ready to approve, how many new fire trucks do we need? How many new ambulances? How many new schools? How many new water pipes? How many new sewer pipes? They should be able to tell you, and eventually me, the answer to that question, because we know the boundaries and we know the density, and it's a math problem. So, my encouragement to you is not to give up on the density question and to continue pressing on the density question, because to Commissioner Heinz's point, there's going to come a point in time where a developer brings a project in after he or she sees three other developers get their project approved, and somebody in the city is going to tell them, not so fast, before we can approve your project, a new fire station has to be built, or a new ambulance has to be purchased. And who's going to foot that bill? And so, so I want to suggest as, at least as a homework problem, I think it was Commissioner Jigetz who said, you know, there are communities around us who, who do have clear standards. Chesapeake, for one, uses levels of service around schools and EMS and roads and traffic, and so, and it's built into their, their, their plan, so that everybody knows what the standards for levels of service are. I don't think we have levels of service for any of those things, but it might be worth our while to have our planning department go contact the planning department in Chesapeake to see how they've implemented, because as someone pointed out, when we at City Council reviewed the project that's going in at the Kroger site, if the developer was bringing that development forward in Chesapeake, the package would have included more than just a request, it would have included the analysis that shows that the schools are, have the capacity, that the EMS capacity is okay, and the fire department capacity is okay, and the traffic capacity is okay, because it's part of the level of service requirement in Chesapeake. Second comment, so I was at the workshop, and let me thank you and also the planning department for hosting that workshop. I think it was very important to give folks who, who are impacted by these changes the opportunity to engage and be heard. Two things that, that I have from the workshop. First, Ms. Chop specifically called out things that came up at the workshop that have been addressed. What I didn't hear was, is there anything at the workshop that you chose to not address? Because the public came and spoke, and so we ought to account for every comment that was made, either has been built in the way it was asked to be built in, it was built in in some other compromising way, or we chose to ignore their comment because we didn't think their comment was worthy. The other thing that happened at the workshop, and this was a sidebar discussion, so there was a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals here, and, and so after the workshop was over, I asked him, so you see waivers come into the Board of Zoning Appeals on a regular What's your top waiver? And his answer to Commissioner Heinz's question just a few minutes ago, well, it's these very skinny lots that have setback requirements on, on either side, and typically, those setback requirements are, we are asked to waive them so that they have enough room on skinny lots to build reasonably sized or reasonably width structures. And, and so that's the consistent, he said, pretty much every Board of Zoning Appeals, we see a request to waive side yard setback requirements. And so, so my comment, maybe a question, have we asked the Board of Zoning Appeals, what are the things that they always see? Because if they're always seeing it, then there's a pretty good chance that our zoning code is messed up. If every time somebody wants to do it, they have to come get a waiver, it's tying them up, it's tying us up, and, and maybe we just need to put some common sense into, into zoning based on feedback from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hugel. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Appearing to be no other speakers for this item, CA-22-01. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, if there's no more discussion, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I would like to ask the chairwoman or the staff, if, if I felt comfortable with all of the amendments to the ordinance, except the bulk, to allow staff for the questions that the members and public has brought up, could we approve the other items that were brought before us?
Which one do you specifically?
You disagree with certain items in the code amendment?
Yes, just for my particular, just, just to let you know how, how I would vote, is to approve what has been brought before us, except with the, the bulk. I think that the bulk, with questions from the commission and questions from the public, may need some more work on it, but the other items, for me personally, I would be all right with, and I just didn't know if that was proper to do that.
I would think that if, if you were uncomfortable with a particular section, you could make a, a motion that you agree with sections, you know, except the section they would vote, and suggest the staff go back and do addition, I'm sorry, I shouldn't make that face, do additional research.
We're going to have the city attorney weigh in on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Justin, what were you saying?
I was saying they should, they should be able to recommend adoption of all of it, excluding the section they disagree with, and suggest the staff would go back and, and make additional research on that section they disagreed with, and then send it forward to council.
Ms. DuMau, would y'all speak into your mic, please? Thank you so much.
Okay, I, yeah, I think it just becomes an issue of complexity. It becomes very procedurally difficult if we're carving specific amendments out, but I think if Ms. DuMau is comfortable with it, I think you could make a motion to recommend approval of all but one, recommend denial or deferral of the other, and everything would move forward to council, and we can figure out how to address it at the council level at that point, and planning can come back with a revised version of that particular amendment later on. It does become difficult procedurally when there's not a flat up or down vote on items that come before you.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and we can discuss it, or it can be deferred, but I would like to... but I would like to approve the CA-22-01, except the article regarding the density. I would just like staff to revisit that from the concerns that we've had.
Commissioners, is there a second or any comment?
Yeah, I actually do have a comment. And on the surface, I agree with my colleague here on this. But I think that we have, we had, that this level have really put some real good due diligence into this, I think. And really, when it comes down to it, what we're going to present is a recommendation. Whether we recommend it up or we recommend it down, the real work and vote takes place at the council level. I think, you know, when it really comes down to it, we're going, we can pass a recommendation and as evidenced at the last meeting of the council, they can vote it up, vote it down, or vote it sideways, which, you know, I think ultimately, with the amount of heavy lifting that this is going to entail, likely this thing's going to go sideways a couple of times. So if I was the final decision maker here, I would certainly side with my colleague here, but I'm really not. So I'm a recommender and person that brings forth situations and issues that I see. I hope council, you know, pays attention to these things. So, you know, that's kind of what my hope is there. But I'm not sure if I want to deny, I do think that we certainly should review our density issues here. But I tell you, Attorney Miller's situation, I think it does cause a situation with staff to have to keep track of two separate paths with two separate things going. You know, I think it's either you should vote it up or vote it down, in my opinion, because I don't want to cause any additional problems with staff in terms of having to keep track of the many moving parts here. That's probably going to happen once we vote it up or vote it down. You know, we could still recommend denial, and, you know, council could come back and go right over top of us and say, yep, we're all for it, hooray. And that's where the end is with that, so.
May I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. I understand your concern for density. Please be aware that we look at each application on a case-by-case basis. So the ranges there would only apply if he met all the criteria. Setbacks, stormwater, is it Chesapeake Day regulations? So it's on a case-by-case basis. So each site wouldn't have the same density. And as for communication, we do route these requests to all the departments and get their feedback. And then, two, we're now going through a five-year update of the comprehensive plan. So city departments are communicating with each other. We, when the application comes in, we immediately route it, and we discuss it. We have development review meetings. So someone just doesn't come in to plan it, and we stamp it and say, you can do it. We do evaluate it from a comprehensive perspective. Everyone doesn't get the same density. It's a range. You may, you may, based on the criteria, you may qualify for the higher range. Based on criteria, you may not qualify for that. So it's on a case-by-case basis. And as for the Innovation District, we have a development, a consultant we're working with, and we're looking at how we can best develop that area. The RACE grant is going to be criteria for that, and we're going to make sure that when we redo High Street and all those streets in there, it will be, we'll address the new development proposed for that area.
Madam Chair, if I could maybe offer a substitute motion in this is, I think maybe we can proceed with the higher densities, but is there any sort of mechanism that, in the staff report, that we get those types of pieces of information? That you have talked with schools and you have done those. I'm a big trust-but-verify guy, you know, that's just who I am. But I think I'd probably feel more comfortable if I knew that all these people were indeed touching it and that we were seeing those comments coming directly from those individual departments.
We will include it in staff report. We started to include it, if you noticed.
I did see that.
But we will include the comments from other departments.
Yeah, I think maybe the substitute motion would be naturally to approve those, you know, as presented, but with, you know, some additional reporting as a condition when it comes to the density, is what I would maybe offer as a substitute motion, also factoring in the change to the two driveways, which we've identified as an error.
Thank you. Commissioner Hines, any other? Commissioners, it looks like we need a second to Commissioner Coleman's motion. Is there a second to her motion?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, there would be a second to Mr. Hines' substitute motion?
But, okay, nobody responded. Okay.
I would actually move to approve the recommendation as presented, including the densities, provided that staff reports do include a impact statement amongst all areas of the schools, particularly as it speaks to density.
Thank you. Commissioner Hans, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a motion and a second to approve CA-22-01 as presented, excluding the density and the impact statement as it relates to the, no, no.
Including, including.
Including the density, but wasn't it?
Including the density and the impact statement relative to the schools, et cetera. Is that good? Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Jigots?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Ms. Dumois, is there anything further?
I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.